Royal Oak Planning Commission, I'd like the members of this body to introduce themselves, starting at my far left.
Ian Barrow.
Jeff Chase.
Jim Ellison, Mayor.
Clyde Esbury.
Tim Twain, Planning Director.
Rebecca Black.
Sarah Malali.
David Fulton, City Commissioner.
Harry Casada.
Let me take a moment to welcome Rebecca as our newest member. Welcome aboard. Hopefully you enjoy it. That moves us along to our first.
Let me, let me strike some of the planning commission members. We now have a new sound system and it is very sensitive, so you don't need to put your face out to it anymore. You can usually just let it go. It'll see. It's very loud.
Yeah, that is. All right, I'm looking for the approval of the minutes from the March 10th, 2015 meeting.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Mr. Chase, supported by Mayor Ellison. Any corrections, additions, deletions? Not seeing any, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That moves us on to our first item of new business, item D1, which is a public hearing, SP 150411. Site plan to construct an accessory off-street parking lot for the grocery store Holiday Market located at 212 through 216 East Harrison Avenue. Mr. Twain.
This item was originally in front of you at your August 12th, 2014 meeting where it was approved. It's back in front of you this evening because of one primary change between this plan and that one. It's still proposed to be a surface parking lot constructed on the parcel between Harrison and Parent. It has 136 parking spaces. The primary difference between this site plan and the prior one is that the prior site plan contemplating the vacation of a portion of Delaware. Delaware Avenue from Harrison to Parent does not go all the way through. It's only about a half to, a little more than a half of it is a public right-of-way from Harrison south, so it doesn't extend through. As part of the prior plan, the petitioner was going to submit a petition to vacate that property. Under this plan, their proposal is to actually dedicate a portion of the property they own on the plan that I have depicted on the screen. It would be this portion along the east side of the parcel, so that Delaware Avenue could actually be opened from Harrison to Parent and paved at some point in the future. That's the primary change between the plans. In terms of the contingencies, the change is that that dedication now occur and that any of the landscaping depicted on the landscaping plan proposed there be installed along with the surface parking lot. Other than that, as I said, the layout of the surface lot and the other screening setbacks and things is the same. So basically, the green belt along the east side of the property would be reduced to approximately four feet of, four and a half feet of private property. The rest would be out in the public right-of-way of what would be a future Delaware Avenue versus having no roadway through there under the old plan. So other than that, our contingencies are their standard contingencies listed in the staff report.
Any questions for staff at this point? Not seeing any, is the petitioner present? Meet yourselves with our good if you would, and tell us about your plan.
All right, Tom Vialanti.
Craig Mangold.
After, as Tim said, after we really studied the plan, the connectivity to go from Kennelworth to Parent was far more important than extra, having the vacated and more land. So we had a collaborative meeting with Tim and for Matt.
Let me stop you here, Tom. Kennelworth to Parent, you're talking Harrison to Parent, aren't you?
Yes. I am, I am, I am. Thank you, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. But, but we, all right, so, so with that, we had a collaborative meeting and we came up with this plan thinking it was a better plan for the community. There's not much more to that.
I was gonna say, it's pretty simple. Any questions for the petitioner at this point? All right, not seeing any, if I can ask a gentleman.
There's a question here.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. When I saw this was coming back, I was curious if you decided to, decide to install some green infrastructure as part of the parking plan that we talked about last time, but that's not part of this plan?
That was between, I, I didn't get involved with that. That was our engineer talking to Matt, and this is what their agreement was. I, I didn't put one tree in that plan. I, I don't know what the, what the agreement was.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Not seeing any, I'm gonna ask you gentlemen to take a seat real quickly so I can open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the planning commission on this issue? Ms. Lanfair.
I don't even have to say you know the rules.
I sort of do. Been here before. Good evening, just want to say hello to all of you, and I want to thank all of you for your service on this board. I know that this is no piece of cake, that it takes a lot of time, so. My name is Eileen Lanfair, I live at 309 California. I've lived there for, on California Street for 53 years now, so obviously my history with Holiday Market goes back a long time. Six of my seven children worked at Holiday Market. In fact, Tom Senior likes to say that he helped raise my family. And my oldest daughter, in fact, was the first female bagger at Holiday Market, so. Just, I'm with the Windland Park Neighborhood Association that is a part of this whole neighborhood, and we really think this is a really great plan, particularly with the street open from Harrison to Parent. That's, that really does help the traffic flow in our neighborhood. It isn't as important as it used to be when the schools were open, the people had to get through, but it still is, is a very important thing. And I think what we're really looking forward to is cleaning up some of the parking issues that we have. We know how important this business is to our community. It's a very successful business and, you know, has a lot of value for us. And of course, the Mangold and the Vialati families are such an important part of our community as well, such great philanthropists, so just want to make sure that, that we recognize that as part of this whole process. So what, but as far as the neighborhood is concerned, we have issues with employees' parking on the, on the street at this point. And I know that part of your goal as a planning commission is to ensure that when businesses present a plan to you, that there is sufficient parking such that it doesn't impact the other, the rest of the businesses or the area. So the fact that this, this parking will address a lot of that parking is really important to us. I just hope there was, there's some way that we can ensure that they don't get even more business. It's hard enough to find a parking place when you go into their lot right now, and I shop there all the time, but, but certainly, we, we're looking forward to having the parking that is currently on Kennelworth and on Delaware now be able to park in the, in this new parking area, so, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to address the planning commission on this matter? Not seeing anybody, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to this side of the table for discussion or motion.
Mr. Chase, the intent right now, just to dedicate the right-of-way, but there's no plan to put a road in there right now at this point, is there?
I'm not gonna say right now, but in the near future.
Yeah, so the plan in front of us doesn't include any kind of road design or anything, so that's, if we ever get to that point, then we need to have some input on that, because I know one of the original problems we had with opening that up was, was truck traffic, and I think it can be mitigated by how we design the road that goes through there, so. But if we're not working about the road, I'm not gonna worry about that tonight.
Just that would come back before us, right?
The design of the road?
Yes.
No?
That's a city commission matter.
Well, really, the design of the road is simply done through engineering, a standard layout and design.
Okay, well, then I'm, then I'm gonna go on the record, say my concerns are with, if the road is, is too wide, we're gonna start getting semi-trucks coming off of Harrison and cutting through. So I'd like to see the road designed at least narrower, narrowly here with, with reduced access or.
Turning radiuses.
Turning radiuses or whatever, to make it difficult for a truck to get through. I have, it's great that we have the cars be able to go through there, but if we can do anything to mitigate semi-trucks and heavy traffic going through there, off the Harrison truck route, I think that'd be good.
Well, I guess I do have one quick question. Mr. Vialanti, if you could, could you come to the microphone and just quickly discuss, you know, what kind of plan you plan on implementing to address the concerns of employees' parking in the street?
Well, this is essentially gonna be an employee parking lot, so what we're gonna do, on the gates, we're gonna have employee badges, and then they're gonna swipe in. So the whole, this, this was a conversation we had with Jim, and he said, we needed holiday parking, he says, you gotta find a place to park these, you know, cars. So that's what the whole point of this whole project is.
Excellent.
And I have no problem with working.
Yeah, I, I'm sure you would, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can put a no, no truck going for right turn only, things like that.
Yeah, there's ways we can do it and still keep the road accessible for the neighborhood.
Yeah, we don't want, we don't want trucks going down.
And I think all of us up here understand that, but just to get on the records for everybody at home and so forth, I appreciate that. Mr. Fulton.
I move approval of the site plan. Support.
Yeah, the motion by Mr. Fulton, supported by Mr. Chase. Any additional discussion on this motion? Not seeing any, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right.
And now a whole bunch of signs.
That moves us on to our first sign variance, which is sign variance 150403. A sign variance request to reface an existing freestanding sign and convert a changeable copy panel into an electronic message center for automobile wash, A-Super Car Wash located at 31295 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twain.
Well, as the report indicates, they are simply refacing an existing sign configuration. The sign, the freestanding sign is exists and is pictured, is too tall, it's some 28 feet, eight inches tall. Therefore, the first variance they're requesting to continue at that height is a, is a 12-foot waiver, 12-foot, eight-foot waiver. The maximum freestanding sign height under the signed ordinance in this sign area is 16 feet. The second waiver, again, is related to the configuration of the sign. Freestanding signs are limited to some 42 square feet of area. The proposed sign is significantly larger than that, some 151 square feet, therefore the variance request of 109. The sign is depicted in your packet that they're proposing to put up, as well as the existing.
Any questions for Mr. Twain? Not seeing any, and I know the petitioner's present, I met him outside. If you could come up, sir, and tell us about your plan.
Hi, I'm Brian Gesun. This is Heath Stack. He's the, we're both the owners of, the owners of Super Car Wash, and this is Andrew Colackey. He is from the sign company, and he's going to tell you the specifics of our plan.
Hello, good evening. Andrew Colackey, Metro Detroit Signs, address is 1117 Ferndale, I'm sorry, 1117 East Breckenridge Ferndale.
Thank you.
So I just want to point out, number one, the message center that you see on here, the electronic message center, they're not proposing to do that right now. That was something that Kevin Duhanek and the building department suggested that we add in, in case they wanted to do it in the future, and didn't have to come back for another variance meeting. So the only thing we're trying to do right now is just reface the existing box. And really, the hardship that these guys would have, if we were to have to take the existing structure down and reduce the size of that to conform with the ordinance, they're gonna be looking at a very, very large cost to do that. So all we're proposing is to really update the artwork. We're not making any, or changes to the structure beyond changing the artwork on the existing face, and that's the plan.
Any questions for the petitioner?
I just want to clar, sorry, I just want to clarify. So right now, you would reface the sign and the, the sign that's up there now that you switched the letters, that would remain?
That would remain, yes. The EMU is not something these guys are looking to do right now. They just wanted to present it to you at this meeting to see if you would approve it for a future change, if they decided to do that in the future, so they didn't have to come back for another meeting. So, yeah, really, the only thing we're proposing right now is just to change the artwork on the face.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Fulton. And just my comments, I'm looking at the last page. I like the new artwork, but I do not like this electronic sign, so I'm glad you're not going forward with it this time, and hopefully you don't come back with it. My two cents.
We, a lot of businesses in, in the community and throughout the area are moving towards this sign that would allow us, it would allow us greater, yeah, it would allow us greater use, and we could use some for community messages and stuff like that throughout the community, but if, if that's, if you'd rather see us not do that, then that's fine as well.
Okay. Oh, you're, a busy place, so I think, I think just putting your sign up there is sufficient. So, we got a lot of different signs that are telling the community what's going on, so. I mean, I appreciate your efforts maybe down the line, but for me, it's gonna take a long time.
Okay.
Mr. Chase.
Yeah, and I don't know if they said it, but I know you're not coming for it, but is there a if-not-then-when kind of thing? Is there an anticipation of two years?
We really haven't, we really haven't made a plan at all. It was a suggestion, like, like Andrew said, it was a suggestion by the, by the building supervisor that we also go forward for this in case, in case sometime in the future we wanted to do that.
But the main, the main thing is the refacing, like we could take the, the roof completely off.
Okay. Not seeing any other questions, I'm just gonna ask you gentlemen to take a seat real quickly and see if there's anybody in the audience who wants to address us on this matter. Is there anybody out there who would like to address the planning commission on this matter? Not seeing anybody, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to this side of the table. Ms. Barrow.
I have a question for Tim. They're asking for a 12-foot height variance. They would be allowed to have that pole sign if it wa, if it was the, at the variance, right? It's not the fact that it's there, it's the fact that the height.
Right, if it was 16 feet to the top, it would be fine.
And so they could cut it down to that, and it would be okay?
You'd just have to deal with the square footage.
And the area, okay.
No other words, any public comment?
Mayor.
Um, I don't have, I don't have a problem with this. This, the sign, especially with the way they're updating, the, the sign itself is unique because it's not your standard square sign that we see everywhere. It's a sign that's got some character, and they're gonna dress it up by putting new artwork on it. I don't have a problem with the height. I think if we were to force them to, to bring the heights down, height down, it would be lost behind the building for any northbound traffic. It would be so low that you wouldn't be able to see it. So the sign has been there, this is an issue we faced before, where you got an existing sign, and all they're really doing is refacing it. Electric message center, if, if we were more focused on what it was, I think we could, we could, you know, address it. But at this point, since you guys aren't even sure whether you want it or not, I think it'd probably be easier just to get this approved with the, without the electric message center. With that being said, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mayor Ellison.
Support.
Support of Mrs. Malali. Any additional discussion?
I have a question, is it, I have a question, is it without the electronic message sign?
Without the electric, the truck message sign.
Okay, that was my question, too.
I was gonna ask for clarification on that also. Any other questions or discussion? All right, not seeing any, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All set.
That does not prohibit you from coming back at a later time to request that message sign.
Okay, thank you.
I made it, and it was supported by, it's Sarah down there.
That moves us on to our second sign variance, which is sign variance 150404. A sign variance request to install a wall sign for the hospital located, or Hospital Beaumont Health System located at 3601 West 13 Mile Road. Mr. Twain.
The petitioner is proposing to have what are considered two wall signs on the facade of the, the building. The sign ordinance in this area, sign area one, simply allows one, so that is the first variance they're requested, in the sense is to allow two wall signs on the, on the building facade. The second one is related, that the max is 10% of the facade area up to 100 square feet. Their sign total exceeds that by some 144 square feet when you add the two signs together. So those are the two variances they're requesting the planning commission to consider.
Any questions for Mr. Twain on this issue? Not seeing any, is the petitioner present?
Hello, sir? Hello. Hi, my name's Jared Kapalaski, I'm a senior project manager with Jonesing and Sal at Beaumont Health System. I've been at Beaumont for 14 years, and I'm pleased to be representing Beaumont here today in this sign variance request. Beaumont Hospital's been given a wonderful opportunity to further improve the quality of care we give our patients and better serve the community because of an extraordinarily generous gift. The ASA and Sarah Shapiro family have generously offered their philanthropic backing to support the renovation of our second floor, East Tower Surgical Care Intensive, Surgical Intensive Care Unit, excuse me. This is a 20-bed unit serving critical care patients who have just come from invasive cardiovascular surgical procedures. Because of the generosity of the Shapiro family, we'll be able to better serve these critical patients in three major ways. Number one, instituting a new decentralized nursing model. This model will allow the staff to be at the bedside of the patients more and at the nurse stations less, minimizing amount of time the nurses and staff are not in view of the patients. Number three, upgrading all the medical equipment serving these 20 patients on the floor. Medical technology improvements from this new equipment will allow Beaumont staff to more closely monitor these patients, reduce the time staff spends running tests, and will allow doctors to make even better decisions on the patient's treatment. And the third one is architectural renovation of the unit to accommodate the new equipment, the decentralized nursing model, and improve the state, patient, staff, and visitor flow. The sign we are proposing and asking for a variance for will be similar in size and style to the other previously approved exterior signs on the Beaumont Royal Oak campus, recognizing gifts of similar size. Most recently, the Tyner Center for Cardiovascular Intervention Sign and the Minestrelli Women's Heart Center Sign. I humbly ask for your approval of this variance, allowing Beaumont to properly recognize the Shapiro family's incredible generosity, and allowing us to install an exterior sign on the north face of our East Tower at the second floor level. The north wall of what will be the new Sarah and ASA Shapiro Heart and Vascular Intensive Care Unit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Casada.
Just real quick, currently, the, the photo we have here, there's a hospital entrance sign, and there's the, the donor name sign. Right now, is there only the, the entrance sign?
Correct, the hospital east entrance sign is the only one that's there right now.
Okay, there's, there's neither a name nor a description, heart and vascular intensive care, that's not there now?
That's correct. That would all be new as part of this request. Thank you.
Just clarification, this is the east elevation of the East Tower, or the north?
This is actually the north elevation of the East Tower.
The north elevation, okay.
Yeah. Could be the 13-mile road facing the side.
Not seeing any other questions, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat real quickly.
Thank you very much.
I don't think there's gonna be anybody who wants to chime in, but let's see. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the planning commission on this issue? Not seeing any, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to this side of the table for discussion or motion. Ms. Barrow.
I'd like to make a motion to move with approval.
Motion by Ms. Barrow.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Casada. Any discussion on this motion? Start with Mr. Casada, then go to the mayor.
All right, I just want to make the comment is that, you know, this, there's a wayfinding sign here, and then there's an informational sign here, and I realize I don't, Tim, I don't think there's any provision in the, in the ordinance that recognizes when this happens. I think this is not the first time it's happened, when there's, there's, somebody's asking for signs, but the signs are really two different purposes. I'm correct, am I not?
Generally, you can't get into what's on the content. You can put up a sign, and the content of the sign is, we can't regulate, so.
Okay.
Mayor Ellison.
It's the same thing I said the last two times when we did this. Yeah, our, our sign ordinance is there to prevent sign clutter and, and, to prevent the city from getting too much mess. This is not the case here. We've got a situation where, you know, Beaumont, all, the entire building is within their own property, all they're really gonna be doing is putting this sign so that anybody on the, on the grounds itself will see that, you know, this building was donated by this family, which I think is good, because I think we're fortunate to have the hospital of Beaumont's integrity and, and size in our community, and, and if we can keep encouraging philanthropists to, to give us money to make our hospital better, then I'm all for it. And if it's as simple as letting them put a sign on the side of a building, then it's a pretty easy decision.
I would say that in conjunction with the fact that you take a sign of this size against the building of that mass.
Yeah.
And it really doesn't seem like we bring it all to ourselves. Not seeing any other discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All set. That moves us on to our next sign variance, which is sign variance 150405. A sign variance request to install two roof signs and replace existing freestanding sign for a retail store, Royal Oak Bookstore located at 28806 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twain.
What I got up on the screen is the roof sign, the current appearance of, of that sign looking from the south view, as well as the proposed sign proposed by the petitioner. The new sign would be 45 square feet. The sign ordinance does not allow roof signs, they're a prohibited type of sign, and that's basically anything that is mounted, attached, or projects over the roof of the building as defined. Also in your packet and on the screen is the north view, as being proposed, again, similar to the south view. In addition, the petitioner is proposing to remove a freestanding sign that is slightly larger, I believe it's about 63 square feet, and that entirely projects out over the public right-of-way. Signs under the sign ordinance are not allowed to project or hang over the public right-of-way. What they're replacing it with is a slightly smaller freestanding sign with a message board that still projects over the public right-of-way. So those are the two variance requests that are listed in regards to the technically three signs, two on the roof and, and one freestanding.
Any questions for Mr. Twain? Ms. Barrow.
You said two on the roof, I'm confused by that. Is it both sides of the existing brick?
Yes.
Okay, so they want to keep the brick, and they want to add a new sign to it.
Both sides.
Both sides, okay, thank you.
Actually, I did have one question in regard to that. Let's say for argument's sake that that projecting rooftop area was actually a cutout, and they were projecting, presenting or asking for one sign that fit into that cutout, which you could see from both the north and the south. Would that still be two signs, or would that now fall into the category of being one sign?
There'd be two, there's probably two signs, because they're at two different elevations.
Well, I think the reason they're treating it as two signs on a roof is that it's not connected in any fashion now, versus if you just had a, normally when you have a sign, you've got two faces to it. In this case, it's, I think the treatment it is being treated is it's placed on two different walls.
Ms. Barrow.
The example they're showing looks like some sort of illuminated messaging board. Is that, is this just an example, or are they planning on having a messaging board?
I think I'll let the petitioner explain their proposed sign.
Not seeing any other hands, I will call for the, is the petitioner present? Please come up, introduce yourselves, tell us about your signs.
Hi, Joe DiDucai, I'm a lawyer, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Small presentation here for you tonight.
Michael Zach, I'm from Secure Solutions, the sign contractor proposing the signs on the property.
What we currently have there is, you meet the property in the sense that it's pie-shaped, as you can see from that, that render. And it makes it virtually impossible to have the other type of signage, which you've got here, is this is the, the shape. The signage is nicer. For the public, and it needs to be, it needs to be retrofitting, and that's basically what we're talking about here, and what actually needs to be recognized is reducing the signage by 50%, so basically increasing the efficiency of the signage with the way that this particular design and that Mr. Zax here has designed for. With respect to the wall, the wall sign was actually intended to be a single sign because it's going to be inlaid in that, in that brick wall, and so it's one sign. As you can see, it is also replacing existing signage and reducing what is currently today an 18-by-14-foot sign by a 5-by-10 sign. So, again, increasing the efficiency and location and the aesthetic appearance of the signage. If you go back to the history of these buildings and the business district there dates back to the mid-1900s, and as you can see, a lot of the businesses share walls there, and because Woodward Avenue is the All-American Road that has a speed limit of about 45 miles per hour, having signage like this helps motorists be safer because they see it in advance of stopping and putting on their turn signal. So that's one of the reasons why they've developed over the years. What we did was we took some samplings of other businesses in the area that had been before the commission over the years, and even currently, before I get to that, since I just located the other rendering, Mr. Zax prepared these renderings for you so you can see exactly what we're talking about here. The encroachment on the sidewalk is actually an air encroachment. The structure itself is an existing structure, and it's on the premises of the property, the owner's premises. What you have here is, this is the structure here. You can see it's pretty massive, and we're intending on scaling it back to either this or this, okay? But in any event, it would be simply an air encroachment, and it would not give any public hazard or any problems with respect to public safety. We went through and took a survey, basically, of businesses within two miles going up and down Woodward Avenue, and as you can see, there are signs as proposed on walls at the Village Automotive there. They have multiple signs. They have, I counted five, and clearly exceeds the square footage that is being proposed here, which is within the ordinances. You have McDonald's, which is approximately a mile, just south 13-mile road. Their signage far exceeds the height of the building, and they do have the EMC signage, as you can see here. And then another rendering, another sign that they have on the same building, actually if you count the logo, it's three. It exceeds the height of the building as well. If you look at Pier 1 Imports, which is also a business in the last 10 years or so, you can see that their T-sign far exceeds the height of the building. The other sign that they have somewhat exceeds the height of the roof. On the parapet, you've got here, I Redco Tavern, you've got the auto service sign. They actually have two signs in a single pole that exceeds the height of both the chimney and the building. You can see off to the distance, you've got the Shell gas station sign. They also use the EMC boards. Here's a close-up with respect to that signage. A more recent sign, within the last year and a half, that was approved, exceeds the height of the building, also a little bit encroachment, air encroachment on the sidewalk. Let's see. This is also a recent sign, the last three years, Physical Therapy Facility, that encroaches the public sidewalk. It's an air encroachment that exceeds the height of the building by several feet, also multiple signs, as you can see. Once again, Village Automotive, here's another sign that is also a flag sign. There is some encroachment on the public sidewalk. It somewhat exceeds the height of the building as well. Here's a Sage Moore Motor Lodge. They're clearly substantially encroaching the air rights on the public sidewalk. Here's a more recent sign that was put up in the last eight years, which is Enterprise Rent-A-Car. They are above the building, a pole sign that encroaches on the public sidewalk as well. There's multiple signs also on, these are on roofs, or at least they're hung on roofs, and they encroach on public sidewalks. Sorry about that. Here's another photograph, which also indicates multiple businesses going all the way down Woodward in southerly direction.
Keep in mind, that's part of the city.
That's Berkeley.
Sorry?
That's the city of Berkeley.
Yes, part of that is Berkeley.
All of that is, that's all Berkeley.
Here's Restaurant Billy Sims, put up in the last three years. It's El Mota, which is structured completely on the roof, and obviously the signage there that you see is on the public right of way, the signage here. Because, like you say, back in the 1950s, that's just the way they were structured, and that's the way the business district was formed. But no different for this particular property, because it is of that vintage, and it wasn't created by the applicant. There are other structures, refined resale, tailoring alterations.
I think you've shown us plenty of examples of signs that are non-conforming. I think it's important for you to understand also that a lot of those signs predate our sign ordinance, and as we are addressing the Woodward corridor, we're trying to clean up signage until what we can, which isn't to say we're not going to give you, you know, a fair hearing, but some of those signs predate our ordinance, so they're not all necessarily applicable to what we're discussing here this evening, so.
Right. Here's a more recent sign, also on a wall sign that exceeds a real bit similar to this.
None of those are really all that recent. You're talking about Golden Basket, or you're talking about Joe's Army Navy. They've been there for, I'm not going to say the mid-1900s, but at least the later end of the 1900s.
Joe's Army Navy is the one that I am.
Yeah.
Here's a Alamata, which was approved. That's on a parapet wall. And that was approved in the last 18 months. Here's a new sign, also on the wall, which is the Harvest Garden. While the building was there before, the sign itself is fairly recent. But I think you get the idea of what I've got, these photographs. We turned these in a couple of days ago. They should be part of the file. If you have any questions, we can answer those.
Any questions for the petitioner at this point?
Not at this point.
Just add one thing Ms. Barra's comment. That sign that's mounted on the wall would be one sign that's double-faced, actually. So the brick is actually hogged out, so it's one double-faced sign. It's not two sides.
The brick is hollowed out, totally. That was the question.
Yeah, that's the question.
It's just one sign, correct.
Ms. Barra?
Would this be an electronic message sign?
Yes, it would.
Both of them?
Correct.
Okay.
Not seeing any other questions, I'm just going to ask you gentlemen to take a seat real quickly in case anybody in the audience wants to address this on this issue. I see one hand. Yes, ma'am? I can have you introduce yourself for the record?
Sure. My name is Lisa Gleason. I own the buildings adjacent to this building, 28822 and 28834. Before I start, I just want to make sure that I recognize Gary Casada. He and my husband have done architectural litigation together over the years, so I wanted to disclose that before I started with my comments. Gary will tell you a story. There are three things in the ordinance that I'm going to appeal to your census on. One is visual clutter. The next is pedestrian and traffic safety, and the third one is adverse effect on nearby public and private property. If we look at the animated sign, our question is, what's the need for it? That's 900 square feet. My building that currently houses drought is 800 square feet, and the building that my business is in is 1,187. We had a non-conforming sign that hung over the sidewalk. In 2003, when we bought the building, we removed it because it was not well-maintained and because it was out of conformance with the ordinance provisions. The sign that they're proposing to replace the existing Royal Oak freestanding sign is on a corner that abuts a residential area, and so it seems to me that not only is it an advertising, if it is going to be approved as an animated sign, but it's also, just because it's smaller, it still hangs over the sidewalk, it's still a pedestrian problem. We have a lot of people driving on Woodward. When I went into my building in 2003, we did a time and motion study on Woodward. Going northbound, most of the people are not obeying the traffic regulation because they want to hit 12-mile, and our study was done by Joe Ronzky of Joe Ronzky and Associates in Royal Oak. They showed that the traffic at that stage was going about 60 miles an hour. Going southbound, most people don't even see that sign because there's a median, and there's also four lanes of traffic going southbound. So, in order to be able to get clients and prospective clients into our little strip mall, we have, as a group of all the other businesses, done other creative things to address the method and the limitations in terms of square footage of signage. So in my case, my building has awnings. They're very colorful, but going 60 miles an hour, you will not see a street number. So there are other methods they could be using instead of the signage. In terms of visual clutter, we, as an organization in Royal Oak, have been working our hardest to clean up Woodward Avenue. Woodward Avenue Association, as an economic development organization, has also been working to eliminate that visual clutter. This is just reinstating something that has really kind of an overdone, three signs for a 900-square-foot building. This is not a CVS. This is not a gas station. This is not a national headquarters. This is not an automobile dealership. There really is not a necessity for that. Me personally, because I own the buildings adjacent, Mr. DeLuca misstated something. These are not common wall buildings. They're all separate walled buildings. They were all built somewhere between 1949 and 1953. His building was built in 1953. So one of the questions we have about installing that animated sign in the parapet wall is, what's the engineering like on that wall? Does it meet today's code in terms of wind, storm, and adverse weather? I doubt it. It's a combination of brick and block. So are there rerod? Is there some steel in there? I doubt it. All of the buildings that are in this particular strip are all load-bearing wall buildings with a flat roof, and this is the only building that has that parapet wall. So 62 years ago, when that was built, there probably wasn't any consideration of putting something that would have weight to it on that wall. The intention was, it was painted, and it was a sign on a wall. Now they're talking about putting a sign that has weight. How is it going to be braced? What's the engineering behind it? And I have a building right next door, so if the wind were to blow it, and we had 80-mile-an-hour winds here recently, it'll either fall onto my roof, or it'll fall onto their roof, depending on which way the wind is blowing. I don't want the insurance responsibility of beefing up my building to anticipate maybe what might happen in 100 years, but still, it is potentially a huge liability for me. And the last thing I would say is, I think that that gives them an unfair advantage of having three signs that are not conforming to the ordinance that limits the amount of signage based on the frontage that you have on Woodward Avenue. And if the signs are supposed to be parallel to the street, which is also in the ordinance, these are not. They do not conform in any way. They're perpendicular to the street. So three signs for a 900-square-foot, what tenant is going in there that needs three signs? And if you allow an animated sign, was to control them from future tenants asking for scrolling messages, which this size building is kind of absurd. So I would ask that you seriously consider denying these variances, and that we look at the flavor and the architecture that's in this particular little strip of businesses, and understand that we can't jump to 2015 with animated signs. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Not seeing anybody, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to this side of the table. Mr. Chase, then Mr. Casada?
In a moment, sir.
I have one question, but three. It's in three parts.
This is back to school?
Yeah, exactly. That's a wing wall. Was there a building up before that? So that was, that's just built as a sign. So if they were to change the wording from used books to anything else, would that still fall under the same kind of, what's the word I'm looking for here?
Still a rooftop sign.
Requirements, so it's still a rooftop sign, so they still have to come in and get the, hey, I want to change the lettering, still there, right? Okay, all right. Actually, it was only in two parts, sorry.
Is that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple things. First of all, I just want to point out, currently, I'm opposing Mr. Gleason in litigation, so there's no conflict. Second of all, I do want to comment about Lisa's gift reps real quick. No, I'm familiar with this store, and I, probably there is a variance was probably needed at the time, but that store is one of the more creative and good-looking storefrontage on the strip there, and so I have a lot of sympathy for what I'm hearing, because really, when we get a signed variance request, one of the things we obviously want is to promote the purposes of the zoning ordinance. One is aesthetic enhancement. Now, we saw a bunch of presentation of the signs that were already there that didn't look very good, and in my humble opinion, what's being proposed is not, is not an aesthetic enhancement in the way some of the other signs are. So that makes me lean very heavily not to, not to support this. I do want to say that the comment about the cutout, right now, that large parapet wall is not cutout. That means it has to be cutout if you're going to put the single sign in it, and that would mean, if you're going to do the work to cut it out, maybe you can do the work to cut it off. Just a thought. But I don't think it's an aesthetic enhancement. I'm not inclined to support it. If somebody came up with a creative idea to use that parapet that was aesthetically pleasing, that would be one thing. And I certainly don't think, I certainly don't think it's impossible or even detrimental to put a sign on the Woodward side of the building. Everybody else is doing it. Everybody else is doing it there, and some are doing it very well. So that's my position.
Ms. Malali.
A couple of comments. Number one, I've lived, I live in this area, so I've been driving by here for years, and I think this is sort of an iconic location. The freestanding sign that's hanging over the sidewalk has been there a long time. I don't know that that bothers me as much at this point. And also, the used books on the brick doesn't bother me as much because maybe I'm just used to it. I'm opposed to these electronic messaging in this area. There are people that live there. There are children that play in the school back there. I think it's distracting. I agree with some of the comments about the potential compromising of the structure. I'm not a structural person, so I, you know, I can't comment beyond it being a concern. But I am opposed to the style of sign being proposed and the amount of space that it's taken up. If there was another creative solution to use the existing area in some fashion, I might be more inclined to or receptive to hearing that. But this particular proposal, I'm not inclined to approve.
Ms. Malali.
I also want to agree with my co-planning commissioners. You know, I do realize the shape of the lot and the placement of the building on that lot, you know, does kind of present a little bit of a hardship in terms of locating a sign and for the visibility, but I cannot be in support of, in essence, you know, four electronic signs, two double-sided signs. I absolutely feel like it would be out of, out of character with the surrounding commercial area and, you know, the close proximity to the residential homes on Linwood and the school. And, you know, as Ms. Gleason pointed out, and, you know, I agree, you know, she's, they've done a very nice job in attracting, you know, attention to the business in a nice, tasteful, aesthetic way that's, you know, in character with the area. And there are other ways to bring focus to the business without, without going this severe route. So I won't be able to support it either.
Okay. Mr. Polton and then Mayor Allison next.
Thank you. This proposal was denied because, by the building official, because roof signs are not allowed. And this freestanding sign is not allowed. So I'm not sure what, I mean, when I looked at this, it looked to me just like a mess. I think if you were, the money would have been better spent improving the facade. I think you'd get more people in there. If you looked, there's one slide I was looking at, it's draft. I mean, if you need to modernize a building, it might increase the traffic. There was some samples given of different signs as this is what needed, is needed for to drive the traffic to the business. And I think a couple of those that presented are closed businesses, including, I mean, I would just, when you pointed to an example of the Sagamore Motor Lodge, I mean, that's ready for demolition. That's, the sign's going to go with it. I think the signs need to go with this. I mean, when I look at this, I see, I don't know what's going to be operated here, that you need three signs, these electronic message boards. I mean, I just don't get it. I move that we deny this request.
Of course. We have a motion by Mr. Polton, supported by Ms. Malali. Mayor Allison, do you want to check?
Let me get my comments in. First of all, the freestanding sign for me is, would never fly anyways. I know you, the point was made that it's freestanding over the public right-of-way, but not so much. Well, that's part of the problem because you deal with water and ice dripping off of it. You've got birds that sit up there and make a mess coming out. That's why we're trying to get these things off the, off the right-of-way over the sidewalks. So I, there's no way I would approve any kind of pole sign there. I'd like to see that sign taken down. As far as the sign on the wall, I mean, the wall is there. Right now, it has a sign on it. We can, we can deny the use of that wall for a sign. I don't think we can tell them to take the wall down as part of the structure. But where I want to go here is, I think you're really selling this building short on its capabilities. I think you've got a very unique building with a very unique shape that if you were to really take a good look at it and be creative, how you can identify whatever business is going to go in there, you're going to do yourself a big favor of making the building more attractive rather than taking the easy way out and slap the electronic signs on flat spaces. That's, that's what you're trying to do. I would wish you'd go back and look at your building. You really do have a unique building, even though it was built in mid-1900s. I was building it in 1900s, so, you know, I'm about the same age as these buildings, and I, you know, I think I hold up pretty good. So I really, I really would suggest that you go back and look at what you've got there, which is really kind of an architectural gem, really. Anytime you've got a unique building that's, that's got geometric shapes that aren't, that aren't square, I'm talking right now. So, you know, it's, I'm going to support the motion to deny, and I would suggest you go back and come back with them. You know, if you come back with some creative ideas, I have no doubts that anything you come back with is going to probably require some kind of variance anyways. But this group is going to be more receptive to a variance that has had some thought put into it rather than just slap an electronic sign up there. Okay, I'm done now.
Any other comments? All right. Sir, if you wanted to trust us before I call for the vote, please do.
I appreciate that.
Could you stand, stand microphone, please?
Well, I wanted to show you that actually, the Building Department approved improvements to the bookstore. And this first four feet is actually on it. The other portion of the building, very hard drive-in, and windows were all replaced. Six of those, by the way, stayed in a dilapidated state for about two years or so. And most recent six months, people started throwing rocks and things of that nature through the windows and really made it horrible. There's a quarter million dollars being spent on renovations.
That the Building Department has approved. The gentleman we worked with, in terms of the signage, indicated to provide you with these two concepts with existing signage. And his recommendation was that the commission would accept one or the other. In terms of it being an animated sign, it isn't an animated sign. This sign otherwise conforms with the ordinance. The only two issues that the city officials sent us here for was with regard to the one or the other, as you can see, either the roof sign or the freestanding sign or both. So we wanted to give you that flexibility in hopes of, you know, getting this business back to being a bookstore and improving the value of the property surrounding it because, as I say, there's a quarter million dollars being spent on renovations to the property that I neglected to tell you. It's like luck already. I apologize for that.
Did I see your hand, Mayor Allison?
No.
All right. At least, I saw you were here, but we've already had public comments, so. Is there any other discussion on this motion?
I'll just make the comment that if the, I haven't, we haven't, we, this body hasn't seen the finished design for the building. I don't know who your architect is, but if they're a good architect and you like the design, you might consult with them to see if they can integrate signage with the building that is a little more pleasing. That would be my thought.
Well, we did consult engineers, and that's a part, should be a part. I don't know what they gave it to, with the engineer, where there were concerns about any structural issues. The engineers provided with a stamp certification that structurally, everything would be sound and there would be no safety issues whatsoever.
Engineers are not, not to say all of them are not generally known for their aesthetic sense.
Well, the city's engineers agree with it, so otherwise, we'd be here with that issue as well.
Thank you.
We just, you know, we hope that, that you don't apply the ordinance or the variances in a selective basis, that, you know, there's equal protection and, you know, the First Amendment is allowed to prevail in these instances, under these circumstances.
Did I hear your question?
Tim, I mean, in these cases, do we do a finding as a fact or we just make a motion?
No. The petitioner is, the petitioner has the ability to put signs on this building that do comply. They're asking for a variance to not comply with ordinance requirements. You're not denying them any rights of putting signs on this building. They're asking to go outside those with a roof sign and a sign hanging over the public right-of-way. So no, you don't need a finding of fact. The burden is on them to prove that there's a reason for variance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, then, if there's other discussion, I will call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. And that moves us on to, do you want to take a second? If you could, like, pull it to the side, then I can move on to the next item. Thanks, sir. Then moves us to sign variance 150406, a sign variance request to install two wall signs for a multiple-family development. The South Main Lofts located at 855 South Main Street. Mr. Twain.
The signs that are being presented this evening are, have been considered as real estate signs or real estate advertisement signs in the review of the sign ordinance by the Building Department. So it's, the way we've listed it is, and under the real estate sign requirement, it doesn't allow a sign each facade. It says the real estate sign has to be on frontage. So you'll see that placement of signs on the south and north walls don't have frontage. So that's part of the reason the variances are listed the way are, the way they are, with allowing two wall signs and to allow those wall, wall signs on facades without major street frontage. Otherwise, you could put a wall sign on each facade. Again, because they're, were treated as real estate signs, the maximum size that's allowed is 20 square feet for each wall sign. Therefore, they're, they're 320 in totality, and they're asking for a variance of 300 square feet. Lastly, the last variance relates to, they're indicated as being vinyl and therefore considered banners, and the ordinance doesn't allow banner signs.
Any questions for Mr. Twain, Mr. Casada?
You said the ordinance doesn't allow banner signs, but the report says, except under certain circumstances. What are the certain...
It's a special event.
Temporary.
Right.
Very temporary, like weeks, not...
Right.
Okay.
Not as real estate signs, so.
They're also temporary, but they might be there for months and months, no?
But they're still not.
Did I see your, Ms. Malali?
Yes. Tim, have we allowed, with all the development, we've had over the past 10, 15, 20 years, have we allowed anything like this in the past? I'm trying to think.
Metro Lofts, Metro Lofts, the Fifth had these signs, and we had put a time duration on it. You can have these signs for six months. And then they would have to come back to us and ask again if they can renew that.
This type, like a big one type sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
The Fifth had theirs right on the front of the building, so you could see it down Fifth Street. And I know Metro Lofts would let them go with a, with a big one because they were set back from Main Street. And they said it's, it was, it really wasn't on the front of the building. It was on this, that narrow...
I believe Station 3 had one as well.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking of, yeah. Station 3, so we have.
I remember LA Fitness had a temporary storefront on Washington, but I don't remember them having a big sign when they were trying to advertise.
They put in signs on the doors.
Right, yeah.
We've done this, we've done this for residential developments, where people, where developers are trying to either rent or sell the units, not for a business starting up.
Thank you.
And did I have you next, Mayor?
No, that's all I wanted to get, is that we had done this before.
Ms. Malali.
Can I just ask, were these, were the prior approved, were they also vinyl as well? It was pretty much similar. And can I also ask, stupid question, but has there ever been a instance or any sort of complaints with them falling off or coming off at all? Any prior complaints or...
Due to weather or something?
Well, if there has been, they're either required to put it back up or remove it.
But not any, like, major catastrophes with them flying off?
I don't remember any long-term banners being out of place.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Malali.
One more question, Tim. So if something of this size, were they go up, is it inspected by your Building Department to make sure it's secure or the Engineering Department or...
Well, they're going to simply issue a, the sign permit for it. They're not necessarily going to go out and see how it was mounted.
Okay.
If it starts to blow down, they're going to tell them to take it down or reattach it.
I'm just thinking about a safety issue.
Temporary.
Okay. Thank you.
Not seeing any of the hands. Is the petitioner present? Introduce yourself for the record, if you would, sir, and tell us about your signs.
I'm Michael Stevens. I'm with Signarama in Troy, representing Frank from Aragona Properties, who's the developer. We are proposing two temporary leasing banners at a size of 320 square feet per wall frontage. The reason that we're not doing it on Main and trying to get frontage on the north and southbound is, number one, for exposure. In addition to actually the front of the building, which isn't indicated there, but I think in your packet, there's windows and doors for the apartment leasing spaces. So there's nowhere actually on a flat wall facade area where you'd be able to install any size banner, whether it's 50 square feet, 150 square feet. There's just not a good surface to, back to security point, where you'd be able to put a banner regardless of size. And again, they're really trying to get their main exposure from traffic coming out of downtown towards 696 and then off of 696 into downtown. So that's additional reasons why we propose doing it on both sides. Aragona Properties is willing to conform with additional sizing options. This is kind of the initial size that we went with. The architect had set this drawing up. And based on my calculation, it's 5% of what each square foot frontage side of the building is. So each side of the building is 6,400 square feet of frontage. And if you do the math, it comes out to 5%. So I don't know if that's exactly how they came up with that, but that's, being a sign guy, that's what I came up with.
Well, let me ask you a question real quickly, if I could. I mean, in a perfect world, when would you anticipate putting them up? And how long are you looking to have them stay up?
Ideally, they would like to have them up through the end of the year, as close into the end of fall as possible, and as early as mid, probably May for fabrication, to get an install team out there too. So it wouldn't be anything in, for the next 30 days, I would, I would say.
Anything else you want to add or...
Nope.
Any questions for the petitioner at this point? Mayor Allison.
So you're saying you'd need, how many, how many days to fabricate, 30 days to fabricate?
Within 30 days, we'd be ready for install, yes.
So if we were to say something to allow you to put it up starting June 1st to take it down by December 31st, that would fit, that's a six-month timeframe.
Yeah, I think he's trying to get them up as early as possible to get the leasing of the spaces done. I would rather him not lease, you know, half the spaces than he's paying the expense of the banner.
I understand. I'm trying to, to this be in the middle of April against the middle of May. I mean, I don't care how we adjust it. I'm just asking if that six-month, it's easier for us to put in a six-month timeframe like that.
Yeah, sure. Definitely.
Mr. Casada.
How do you affix them to the building?
This is correct. Yeah, we would use masonry anchors for that. At a size like this, you're probably going every foot across the top and every foot around the perimeter as far as, as the anchor holds. So you'd have 16, 20, about 70 to 80 anchors holding the sign or the banner in place. I guess I should call it a banner because it is a banner. And that also can be out of various materials. Doesn't have to be a vinyl material. It could be a cloth material. It could be a mesh material, which is perforated, allows the wind to shine through, so there are different options for that.
I was wondering if you're going to have any flaps in it or whether it'd be a permeable material. Because I'm concerned, even with 80 anchors, you get a good wind down that wall.
Oh, sure.
It's going to get behind it.
Yeah. On one side more than the other, certainly.
Mr. Casada, another question.
Did you consider placing the sign, it is a big sign, but did you consider making it smaller and placing it within the frame of one of those beige brick areas? In other words, frame, set it in there like a frame instead of having it overlap?
So where the light, light discoloration to dark discoloration?
Yes. You sort of got it, probably because it's so big, it's, it's overlapping, but you do have a design on the side of the building there. You've got those four squares, and if you put it right in the center one, that might, that might be more attractive.
Yeah, it could certainly, I don't know if that wall's actually been finished. These pictures were taken a little...
That wall looks like that today, so.
What's that?
That wall looks like that today.
Oh, does it? Okay. Okay, yeah, I haven't been there in the last 30 days, so, when I started working on this. So, it could certainly fit within that size. You could certainly frame it out. I mean, there's multiple ways of securing the banner for additional support, too, so... But that, from a size perspective...
That would be my thought.
From a size perspective, you, yeah, it'd be, it would be maybe about 40 to 50 square feet smaller if it were to go within that light beige area.
Okay, so...
So, under 300.
11% smaller or something?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. Let me see if there's anybody in the audience who wants to address this on this matter.
Thank you.
Ms. Gleason or Mr. Amber, anybody? I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the side of the table for discussion of our motion. Mayor Ellison?
I'll give it a shot. Mr. Casado, I appreciate what you're trying to do, fit it within that. I'm turning it out myself, and I'm looking at it with the, with the size of the different color blocks they've got. It makes it considerably smaller. If I'm looking at the proper scaling here, it's gonna make it half of what they're, what they're showing us. And I guess if it's only gonna be a temporary sign anyways, I'm not terribly troubled by them going with what they've got. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we allow the variances to hang the two signs, the vinyl signs or permeable cloth, whatever it is, on the north and south elevation of the building for a period not to exceed six months from installation.
Motion by Mayor Ellison?
For.
Support by Ms. Malali. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Casado?
What has been the practice? Have people come back at the end of the time period and ask for an extension?
They can, and we have done it. The way I look at it is, we've got a developer that is investing a tremendous amount of money into our downtown for residential units. And if we can work within our abilities to help them sell those units, then I think we owe them that support.
Certainly agree with that.
And there was a previous settlement, I think it was the Metro Lofts, where they, we gave them a six-month window, and that window also happened to coincide with the real estate crash.
Yeah.
And they were just having a heck of a time selling their units, and they came back and asked for an additional three or six months or what have you. Hopefully, then another crash is not coming, so we don't have to deal with that. Not seeing any other discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? You're all set.
Thank you.
And who supported it? Somebody supported it.
And that brings us to a review of the conceptual site plan to construct 36 multiple-family dwelling units. The Amber on 11, located at 1207 East 11 Mile Road. Mr. Twain.
This is not an item that we're looking for any action tonight on. It's an item that we have had discussions with Mr. Amber on. He would like your input and comments prior to going to actual site plans and architectural documents for this site. I would point out that this is a site owned by the city through the block grant program on 11 Mile Road that Mr. Amber made an offer to acquire. You do have a copy of staff's preliminary overview of the concept plan. And what we've pointed out in there is that the property is currently zoned neighborhood business. Neighborhood business does not allow residential in and of itself. It's only allowed as a second-floor activity, second floor and above, other permitted uses, not including parking. So, the site would need to be rezoned through a rezoning process. The actual district hasn't been identified as part of any submission or application at this point, but there are options there to consider. We've also pointed out that the density of the site, the size of the site, which is approximately 22,500 square feet, under the ordinance standards of 9,000 square feet for the first two units and 3,000 square feet after that, you've come up with approximately seven dwelling units would be allowed under multifamily. In order to get 36 units in compliance with the ordinance, you'd need over 111,000 square feet to get that number of units. So, there is a discussion of density in it and that you'll need to get into. Next is the off-street parking requirement. The zoning ordinance is set up to require two parking spots per unit. Simple math, 36 is 72 unit, or 72 spaces. Mr. Amber's proposing one space per unit, per studio unit, with four extras, based on the concept plan that you have in front of you. And then we've also pointed out a setback. Technically, starts out at 25 feet from each property line. The planning commission does have the discretion to reduce that to what it feels is appropriate as part of your site plan review process. And then finally, the building height strictly under the ordinance is limited to 30 feet to either the midpoint of a peak building or the roof of a flat building. The concept is over that roughly almost 36 feet. So, those are some of the issues with the plan that we're gonna point out, and I know Mr. Amber wants to discuss with you before he goes further with plans. But I also added, after you go through this item that we've spent some time on, he's got a proposal that is up on Normandy and Crooks that we can talk about tonight as well, if you'd like. So, with that, I'll stop.
Questions for Mr. Twain at this point? Not seeing any. Mr. Amber? Going solo tonight, Jerry.
Well, Dennis is on his way.
Yeah. I was gonna say, where's your mouthpiece? I'll go better without him.
We'll manage. And I have, you know, and we have some drawings to pass out, some elevations that you'll see. That is the site plan. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm Jerry Amber from Amber Properties, and as you know, we've been around for a few years. We, our family business that began around 1960, the Coolidge location on, just south of 14 Mile. Justin's sitting up the board as well. I'll begin talking. Hopefully, Dennis will arrive.
There's an easy right there.
I last spoke to the commission on the 2nd of March, when we got approval to, for the city to sell the property, and it's now under contract. We do have 1,279 units under our operation currently and 46 under construction in Troy. In Royal Oak, we operate 675 units at 14 campus locations. As you know, we've done some recent developments in town. The last five, Amber Landing, Crooks and Normandy, just in early 2014, we completed. Amber Corners, behind Gordon Foods, Crooks and 14 Mile, 2013, early in the year, we got that one done. Downtown Royal Oak, Amber Crossing, North Sherman, early 2011. Townhome at 14 Mile, near Woodward. On the south side, Birmingham being across the street, we did that in 2008. And the Amber Oak Townhomes, which was really our first big project in Royal Oak, in my generation, anyway. Late 2006, we finished. With each new project, we're trying to respond to the market. We listen to what our prospective renters tell us, and they say they like the new construction. They sneer at some of the buildings that we have from the '60s and the '70s that they don't measure up. So, we want to provide for them, you know, with all the amenities that the new construction offers. That's why we're so pleased with the site on 11 Mile, because we think this is really an opportunity to do something great. It's a perfect location, we think, for studio apartments. So, the concept of this project is studio apartments. And we think that because our tenants want them and we don't have them, we literally have no studio apartments available in our company at this time. We haven't for over a month. And we think that that speaks volumes to what the market is telling us. We have studio apartments. We have many of them. We just don't have enough. So, the project on 11 Mile, we were gonna call Amber on 11. It's 10 blocks approximately from Main Street. We think this would encourage walkability and bicycling.
Excuse me. He's doing fine without you.
My best, Dennis. Don't make fun. We think we're gonna provide easy access to the Royal Oak destinations that the tenants are looking to, to take advantage of. It'll be encouraging less reliance on the automobile, an excellent example of sustainable design. We think it'll help revitalize 11 Mile Road, you know, that end of 11 Mile, this would improve that. And it responds to real-world market conditions, which we're telling you is impressive to us. So, the next steps are, we'd like encouragement from the planning commission of what we're doing. And if we hear that, we want to continue with the design. Justin and his team are working hard. We would submit, I think, by the 23rd of April, the plans and the latest elevations and all. We are planning, with Dennis's help, the community outreach. We're going to send letters out to the area for their input. And Dennis and I are available to answer additional questions if you have them. And then afterwards, as the mayor mentioned, we do want to mention a few words about the Normandy and Crooks project as well. So, with that, any comments or questions? We're here to help.
We'll start with Ms. Malali, then move down to Mr. Polton.
So, I was wondering, what kind of, you know, bike amenities are you planning for...
Well, we're gonna have bike racks, aren't we, Justin?
Yes, we will.
And, and we're gonna have them in the front and in the back. So, we're going to offer that. We, our project in Troy also has bike racks, so that's the new thing, and that's in the downtown Troy area, so it's also an area of biking.
Mr. Polton?
This is gonna be a new project for Amber Apartments. I mean, one building with 36 studios, is this a trend you see? I mean, you've talked to your tenants. I mean, is this something you've seen across the country that's, this is what people want?
Well, I'll begin, and then Dennis will take over. He did a little research on this, but we rent to young professionals mostly. It's not, of course, exclusively the demographic. And we find that, yes, there are many that like the big town homes with the garages, and they have two, a couple roommates, they split the rent, and it's great. But then we have those that really just don't want a roommate. And as Dennis points out in the letter that he sent you, we're seeing that not just in Royal Oak and Claussen and Troy. We're seeing it nationally in Seattle and, on New York City and Boston and all around. So, these units, as Dennis points out in his letter, fortunately, the forward-thinking ordinance, the Royal Oak's building code, does allow studio apartments 250 square feet. These will be much more than that. I think 310 or 350, we covered that in the letter that Dennis wrote. And so, they're not totally the smallest, but we feel that they will have all the amenities, washer and dryer, heating and air conditioning individually controlled, polished concrete or hardwood floors. It will be lacking nothing, except it doesn't have a bedroom. It's a open-plan concept.
Let's talk about the parking a little bit, because obviously, as presented, we would be basically taking the parking ordinance and then cutting it in half. You'd need a variance for twice the amount of spots that you're providing. Is there gonna be anything within your leasing requirements, I mean, that would limit, let's say, for example, a young couple who want to live together, who may theoretically own two cars, and that's gonna throw your parking out of whack, you know, rather quickly?
Well, as Dennis indicated in his letter, we intend to rent studio apartments to one person. That's our current policy in our company, and we will restrict only, one person may live in this apartment. And with that, one car works, and we've seen in our properties in Claussen and Troy, where we have studio apartments, we have some in Royal Oak as well. Their ordinance actually does allow one parking space for a studio apartment. So, we think it works. Dennis?
Yeah, I think Jerry spoke to that issue. Most of the surrounding communities, with respect to efficiencies or studio, how they define them in the ordinance, is one parking space per unit. So, we would be exceeding that. You know, one thing I want to add, kind of a big-picture item? There's one, been one undeniable truth in the last 20 years in southeastern Michigan. Every housing trend, Royal Oak has led the way. When nobody was doing condos, we did them. We did it down at 696 and Woodward, Bernie Glieberman in Crosswinds. And his team will tell you, they then took that to at least 15 to 20 other communities. Once they happened here, everybody wanted it, and it just flew. And that had never been really done in southeastern Michigan, except perhaps maybe in Birmingham. Okay, very tony neighborhoods, but never in what you would call more of a middle-class market, upscale market, and we did. Then the next thing that Royal Oak did is, nobody except a few other communities was interested in downtown living. And we went that route, and we led the way. And as soon as Royal Oak did it, it happened everywhere else. Happened in Northville, happened in Plymouth, happened in a lot of other communities. So, once again, what we're proposing is something that's a little cutting edge. It's happening on the coast, it's happening in Chicago, DC, places in between, and that's supported. And I urge you to go look at that study. If you have any doubts, this is for real. This is not, this is not gonna be, you know, one-off, and it's gonna last a couple years and be gone. There's a lot of reasons, as I spelled out. I thought the most humorous one was that, you know, millennials don't want to live with anybody, and I'm hoping my daughter's listening, because she's graduating in a couple weeks, and she's gotta move back home. And we love you, honey, but, you know, maybe there'll be an apartment for her. Yeah, I have, I have...
She can move in next to us.
Exactly. Exactly. No, we'd love to have Katie for as long as she wants to stay. But the point is, that study...
You do know the mic's on, right?
Yeah. I know. My wife's... But I know my wife's not watching, because she's watching the Tiger game. So, but one of our friends will call. But the point is, is that my prediction is this is something that's on its way. We have another proposal in its infancy nearby that's a little bit larger, because of their zoning ordinance. But it basically comes down to this. A lot of folks, it's just not millennials, don't have as much stuff. And if they do, they can go to a storage unit. They don't need to pay a high rate for closet space for something. They can go pay $25 a month for a storage unit and keep everything they need or their seasonal needs off-site. Number two, they want, people want to be near, within walking or biking distance of downtown, of an active downtown. And the other thing is, today, especially among the young people, this study showed, and it's the Urban Land Institute, so that's, you know, that's the gold standard in terms of real estate review and studies, is that you and I, when we were growing up, we'd find a job and move close to it. Totally different world now. You find a place you want to live, and then you find the job. That's what, isn't that the truth? So, so that's really what's happening. So, I, my prediction is, with your approval and the city commission with the conditional rezoning request that we're gonna put in right away, I believe that this is gonna be a next trend that we're going to see. And it's not what most people think, you know, somebody just trying to shove as many possible units for as cheap the cost. As Mr. Amber's just described, these are gonna have all the amenities, albeit on a smaller basis, that you would have in any other apartment complex. But it's really meeting the market and meeting what individuals wants, as opposed to somebody just trying to shoehorn as many possible on a site. And the one good thing for the neighbors, when you have a traditional apartment, people can invite a lot of friends over and have a party. Here, 300 square feet, maybe a party of two.
Party's downtown.
Yeah, that's it. The party's, the party's somewhere else. Right, it's either downtown or one of our other fine restaurants or something like that. So, I really think, big picture, there's a real opportunity here for Royal Oak, once again, to be on the leading front of these housing options, because that's really what it's all about. Everybody talks about the housing options for seniors, and I'm going through that with my mom, and I know others have gone through with that. And there's various levels. But we don't think about the other end. And quite frankly, we love and respect all of our seniors who've lived in this community, and we want to provide options for them to stay in the community that they raised their families in. But we also want to attract younger people, and there is definitive studies that have been done in the past that show, if people rent in a community and they like it, they generally buy a house here. So, when the right time comes. So, I think we'll be attracting, you know, the next generation of homeowners also, as long as their jobs don't move them to, you know, Palo Alto or Washington DC or San Francisco.
Ms. Val?
I have a question. Even though you say there'll be one space per unit with the people that you're attracting to live here, I know if I had one, I would be having a lot of friends over to meet there to go downtown, and there's only four visitor spots. So, how... And I can just picture, like, the streets lining up with cars, that being a place to meet, because, yeah, it's only a ton block walk for...
Right. Well, first of all, a lot of folks, depending on it, may not come. They may say, we'll meet you down there, or somebody might pick up folks. Traditionally, apartments, and Jerry can speak to this more, if you drive by any... Traditionally, in apartments, and Jerry can speak to this more, if you drive by any Amber apartment, let's say drive by the one in Normandy and Crooks, and I have at like six or seven in the morning, when you think most people are still there, there's plenty of parking spots available. There's people who are out of town, there's some people who don't, especially in this instance, we anticipate that we'll have a healthy percentage that won't even have cars, because they can walk or bike to work, or however, public transportation to work, and they'll do an Uber if they need it, or whatever other arrangement if they need a car. So, I, we're not, we're based upon past experience with the Amber Apartments. We don't see that as being a difficulty. And I don't think we have that, if you could talk about this facility on Sherman Drive, because that's, that's one that, we're right on top of a neighborhood, and we have...
Mayor, remember, we were concerned about possibly not having adequate parking, though we did meet the codes, there were no variances, and we did an overflow parking area. The overflow parking area that we're pleased we have is never used.
It's a picnic area, you know?
It's a picnic area, exactly. So, we think we have adequate parking to support the Amber Apartments.
I also want to say, I think it's a really cool idea, and I wish they would have been around a few years ago, because I definitely would have been interested. I've always said, we need updated affordable apartments for younger people, so I think it would be really cool.
Meryl, sir?
Only adding on to that, I mean, I've got a 22-year-old son at home that just graduated from college, who spent four years living in a dorm. He loved it. This is the kind of thing that would be perfect for him. He doesn't entertain a lot, he doesn't have a lot of people coming over. He'd be like moving back into a dorm.
His own dorm.
His own dorm. It's, I, you know, we were talking about how we're gonna fill this, we're gonna get Dennis's daughter in there and my son in there, and we, all of us Royal Oakers are gonna throw our surplus kids at this place.
And I guess, question of priorities too, with millennials, and one of the things that was pointed out in the study is that, unfortunately, some millennials, they have good jobs, but they're carrying a little more debt from college and perhaps graduate school. And so, they have different priorities, and they'd rather have that money, rather than buy up, or rent a big place, they'd rather pay that debt down, which in the long term is the smartest thing. Pay, you know, pay a little bit less, have a little bit less space, but being able to pay their debt down is very important.
Have you set the price point yet, or are these...
Well, the true answer is, what will the market support?
Just a guess, I'm not...
I would say it'll be within the 800 to 1,000 range each month, each year. Maybe the upper level will be the most, because they have the loft.
Yeah.
The smaller units, less. A couple other points, and certainly if there are any other questions. Only 22% lot coverage, I think that's an important point. So, there was an issue of, well, that many units. But typically, in apartment construction, we have roughly 30% lot coverage. This is 22%. So, there's still plenty of area that is not a building. And we do have the other topic we'd like to take up with you, but certainly, if there are any other questions of the building, we want to proceed with the design.
Look, I think you came here with a goal of trying to get some direction from us. Okay, so before we go on to the next one, let's talk about this. Things I'm looking, I'm looking at the elevation right now, and what I'm seeing is pretty much a downscaled version of what we're seeing farther to the west with the condos out there, the marketplace condos. So, all, that's not meant it's any kind of critique or anything. I'm simply saying, 11 Mile stretch has already seen this type of massing, and it's familiar with it. Oh, this is smaller, and, but as far as the visual aspect of it, it's still the same type of environment. So, it's not like we're setting any precedent here. I think your concept of attracting to the singles that want to live alone, I think there are a lot of those people out there. They don't want to have to worry about what their roommate's gonna be doing to the apartment. They want to, you know, be in charge of their own space. And I think, you know, they're willing to move into a space like this. And I go, you know, my son, even though he's 22 years old, he doesn't drive, he doesn't have a car, he doesn't need it, he walks everywhere he goes. So, you know, something like this would be perfect for that type of individual. So, as far as, you know, the height, we're a little bit higher than what the code helps, but we're also fronting, again, on 11 Mile Road, where we already have some buildings that are that high, you know, at the other end of the street. So, I'm not seeing a major issue. I'm really kind of excited about the idea. And as Dennis said, I mean, we have always been on the forefront of trying something new. And so, I like, when this comes back in front of us, I like the concept, maybe details will work out, but I'm not seeing where I'm gonna instruct you to try to change anything that's causing me any heartburn.
Ms. Varley, Mr. Casada.
Yeah, I like this plan a lot. I think it's great, I think it's well-needed. We've lost a couple of millennials in our family to Seattle, so we're desperately trying to get them back. One of my comments would be, how green are you willing to go with your new building? I mean, we all know millennials now are, you know, on the green scene, and they're really environmentally conscious. So, I just wanted to know, you don't have to answer tonight, but I definitely want to express my thoughts on, let's see, how green we can go and how impressive this can be for our community.
Mr. Casada.
I just want to clarify some things, and this is not a criticism, I just want to make sure I have it clear. You have here these units, you answered one of the questions, I was gonna ask if there's any storage on-site. It was a plan to be a basement, you answered the question. If they want storage for seasonal stuff, they want to put their bike away for the winter, generally, you're gonna expect that they're gonna have off-site storage.
Yes, there is a patio, each apartment has a patio or balcony. There will be many people in the winter that winter their bikes on their balconies. We see that at our other properties. But all the storage is within the unit itself.
Okay, and there's no elevators here? This is the second and third floor, you access by staircase?
Correct.
On the ends? And the heating and cooling has unit ventilators, is that what you're planning?
Well, we haven't done the engineering yet, but they'll be individual. Each unit will have heating and cooling controlled by the tenant of that unit.
Okay, the picture sort of indicated that there might be a unit ventilator under the window there, I don't...
Well, it's a concept. But we haven't engineered the heating and cooling, it's something we're looking at.
All right. That's, again, this is not a criticism, but it's like a nice motel, in a way, that's your own room, right? I mean, that's how it's built, no elevators, no...
It has a full kitchen, full bathroom, dishwasher, microwave, I mean, it's more than that.
It wasn't a criticism, I'm just trying to get the concept down.
Am I correct in assuming, looking at the drawing here, the first floor is ADA compliant?
Yes, all type A units, except one is a type A unit, correct.
One more question. Regarding the storage, I know where I live, it's, they have rules about what you can and cannot put on your balcony, and because it's on 11 Mile, are you guys gonna have something in the lease that they can't?
We do have, we do have that in our house rules now.
Okay.
That we have many apartments with balconies. But we try to limit it to things like bicycles and charcoal grills and that sort of thing, not clutter, not trash, not debris, not rubbish.
I just wanted to address one issue, and that is the comparison of the motel and this facility, just so we don't get, and I know that was said in the correct spirit, but the big difference here is that, and one of the reasons you know that Amber Properties are kept up very well is they are rigorous in their financial review and assessment of people. If you cannot afford this, if you're unemployed, you won't be rented to. I mean, they have very strict standards. So, they're gonna enter into a lease, which is a big commitment, as opposed to motel, it's, you know, you come and go whenever you want. In terms of size, there may be some equivalency, perhaps, but the reality is, these are much more upscale units. You know, in New York, they have micro apartments, which are smaller and don't have these amenities, they're shared amenities, and that's not something the Ambers are interested in doing. I think each person has to have the full complement of amenities, and that's what they're committed to in each unit.
I understand what you're saying. We lawyers know how important client selection is.
Right.
Same deal.
Exactly, there you go, there you go. I think the dorms is a better, better, better comparison.
Meryl, sir?
Are these units gonna have in-unit laundry facilities?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for the district at this point? Mr. Twing, any further clarification that you're looking for?
No, if you had major objections, I think we both wanted to know if you had issues with the density or the parking, because this will be one of the first projects that you would consider one space per unit. But there've been a few where you've gone to one and a half, but you haven't really gone down to one per unit. Of course, we haven't had studio units really either, as the primary activity, but...
I'm assuming this will be public hearing noticed?
Oh, yeah. It's gonna, they're gonna have to select which zoning...
You're gonna reach out to your neighbors?
Yeah. Because it's gonna be a rezoning to some district, and I don't know, we haven't chosen or discussed that totally yet.
Right. We've been looking at, well, the ones that allow multifamily, or obviously the multifamily and the mixed-use, one and two, but Tim has shared that there are several multifamilies already on 11 Mile, so that may be the route that we go. But I do want to commit that we will have a meeting with the neighbors, and the traditional, what Mr. Amber has done is, following when the postcard goes out from Mr. Twing's department, then we'll send out a letter inviting them to a location about a week beforehand, so we can walk through in great detail, so that those who can make it are prepared and understand, because, you know, we all know, and it's understandable, when there's change, you have a vacant piece of property, and then there's gonna be something put there. People are, generally want to find out what is going on, and we're more than willing and have in the past. That, in fact, I will tell you that on Sherman Drive, probably was the most productive meeting we ever had. All the neighbors had a, you know, suggestions, and some of them were incorporated. And then one of the things they said is, "Can you do anything about that house in the back?" Which he eventually bought for the lot, you know, as the, as the lot. So, I don't know how much we can do on 11 Mile, but we can guarantee that it'll be well-run, and if there are any problems that crop up, they're gonna be resolved immediately. But we'll commit to having that meeting. So, you know, the people who come here are as informed as they can be from our end.
And you did state that our surrounding cities, Claussen, Troy, for example, have already revised their ordinances for studio apartments to only require one spot?
Correct.
I'm kind of wondering if that's something we need to possibly think about in the future. Mr. Casada?
Well, my, I was gonna ask that question, is that in Mr. Cowan's letter, he said that the lease will have a provision that says, "Thou shall have only one car." And I just wondered, does that, does that matter to doing the parking review?
Well, I think we're probably gonna end up with a request for a conditional rezoning to multifamily, so that the non-compliance issues can get dealt with through the rezoning. And one of the conditions they may have just offered is putting that in their requirement or their lease?
Yeah. We're willing to do that. We've talked about that, and that we could put, as a condition of the rezoning, that we could put in that we will only lease, we'll be permitted one car, and that will be per unit, and that will be in the lease. And, you know, it's not unusual, we don't see it here that often, but, I mean, I lived in Boston, and people used to rent their two-car garages out to, you know, all kinds of people, so that they could have a place for their car. That won't happen on-site, but that could happen somewhere else here.
I think we're pretty much out on that.
Well, thank you. Could we touch on just the Normandy and Crooks issue, just to give you, just real quickly, because I know you've been here a while?
And Dennis is available on the screen.
Oh, okay. So, just some quick background. Do you want to remember there was a house on the corner? That house was in bankruptcy in another state in Wisconsin. Mr. Amber had to go through a lot of work just to find out who owned it. He worked through the system and with the bankruptcy trustee, and bought the house through that process, through the sale there, and then was able to demolish the house immediately. The neighbors were extremely happy, because that had really fallen into disrepair, and I won't go into all the details on public television here of how bad it was, but we did, Mr. Amber, I think, did a public service by getting rid of that house. It then turned out that the family to the south that owned the home, after the longtime resident had passed away, that decided to sell also. And we kind of were very fortunate, and we were able to reach an agreement with them on the sale of that property. So, this, this piece of property that you see lines up in terms of the east-west dimensions exactly with the Amber facility to the south. And so, Jerry just wants to give you a complete detail.
So, thank you, Dennis. Yes, that is correct. The, I was just following that noon, the closing on the house on Normandy, 1717 Normandy, is Friday. So, we will then own the parcel in its entirety. This was sort of in the back of our mind, back when we did the Amber Landing project, which we finished early in 2014. And we now plan to finish the site with 11-town homes. These are the complete opposite of the studio apartments, where these are two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, two-car garage with frontage facing Normandy. And this, I think, in the planning parlance is a natural extension of the property to the south, which has the Amber Landing project on it. And currently, the property that we're talking about is zoned single-family. So, Dennis and I are thinking this is a conditional rezoning as well to multifamily. We would meet all the requirements, lot coverage even, when you look at the site on a combined basis. And parking is met, it's inside, there's parking in the back that would be the visitor's spaces. And we would like any input that you may have as we go forward, because this is something we want to march ahead with.
Well, real briefly, just if I could add to it, and we didn't do a staff report on it, because it was coming in late, but it is zoned one-family residential. The property to the south is multifamily, as are several of them to the south as you go along Crooks Road. To the west is a one-family residential. They are, on the plan, proposing 11 units. The site plan has 28 parking spaces, either in the garages or parallel along the south property line. So, they're providing more than the 22 that would be required. The building is a foot higher, as depicted, than the 30-foot limit. The density, again, if you apply the multifamily started requirement, it would allow six units. They're proposing 11. Then there are, the only setback that I see that might be that you'd have to deal with would be the one off Normandy, which is currently depicted at 10 feet. All the others exceed the 25-foot requirement, so I don't see those as any issues at present time. That's kind of a synopsis on a, on a five-minute review to give you kind of the issues.
Any questions on this one?
I'm sorry.
Meryl, sir?
Looking at the elevations I've got in front of me, it looks like it's gonna be a, typically, is it gonna be the corrugated metal and the burnished block and...
Well, we want it to look like an Amber building, that's for sure.
Exactly, that's why I just want to verify.
On elevation, we decided we would go all brick, with the accent brick. So, if you'll notice, we are alternating, we have the indented and the out-dented units, and we are trying to create interest and also privacy of the patios and balconies that would be within the indented area. So, right now, we're thinking a reddish brick on the out-dented units and a brownish brick on the indented units. And on the rear elevation, if you turn the page, we're going to have more metal above the garage, but we were putting for brick on the front facade.
What are you proposing between the upper and the lower windows? Looks like you've got some kind of...
It's a metal panel, that's a metal panel.
And I see you addressed one of the questions I gave you a week or so ago about the ends, and you've got...
Yeah, we're trying to create a little interest there on Crooks Road. We also want to respect the fact that the units face Normandy, the frontage is Normandy.
Yes.
And so, that's where the doors are.
Is this gonna be mirrored then on the west elevation as well?
End elevation?
Yeah, both, this is both end elevations.
That was the thought.
Can you show on the elevation?
I don't think I have one on the screen.
You have one?
It's only in there. It was in the back at the end. I don't have one.
I'm sorry. I have it.
Here, it's got it.
I don't have one.
It's on there.
It's not showing.
Two small points, if I could. First, Tim is absolutely correct. This is the last non-resident, this is the last residential, single-family residential piece left in the strip, all the way from 13 Mile. So, this will be completely multifamily, and I think there's one senior living facility, the Charles.
Charles, yeah.
Yeah, that's in that, that's in that strip. So, this'll kind of complete this corner. The other thing I want you to know is, according to Mr. Amber, because I asked him this several times in the past couple weeks, we have not had any complaints from our surrounding, our residential neighbors to the back of the facility, the lofts that was built two years ago. So, we didn't anticipate any, but I just want to let you know that, that there have been no complaints that we've received, nor that we know of even at the city, about the no complaints that we've received nor that we know of even at the city about the facility that we have. So I think there's been a peaceful coexistence and quite frankly, I believe most of the neighbors from the ones that Mr. Amber's talked to are really happy about the fact that that house is gone. And the one house that was there, if you're familiar with it, it's a very small house. So we're not, we're not going to be knocking down that house, which is in relatively good order, but it is a very small house. So I don't think we're going to be taking away too much by having that house demolished and then replaced with the 11 units.
Mayor Olson?
I think, Jerry, I think I've asked you this before. I know that there's a number of Amber developments right at the end of Lexington, that's the other side of the family, is that, are those yours?
Yes, goes back 25 years, but yes, more opposite the high school on Chester Road, yes.
Your father, your father and aunt's generation, yeah.
But we do not operate them.
Okay.
Anybody else want any comments on this one?
That'll be, this one will be coming before you soon then also. I don't know what our timetable is.
23rd of April is our seminole.
So we'll get both of these before you. We appreciate your time. We know you've got a lot of things going on, but we had unique circumstances, particularly with the property on 11 Mile. And we'll start moving forward. And I hope this sets a tone for the spring here in Royal Oak, that there are those in the community that are bullish on their investment and nobody's greater than the Amber family and the investment they've shown all these several years. I think they've invested as much as anybody in the community. No argument.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So that moves us on to...
Straight up site, let it go.
I think everybody had an opportunity to leave those over. If there's any questions for Mr. Twing on those?
I think we're all good.
And then the final item is the notice of master plan adoption for the city of Pleasant Ridge. Anything you want to add to that, Mr. Twing?
Nope.
Congratulations, Pleasant Ridge.
We are looking for the mystery motion from our newest member.
I would point out before you adjourn, I would point out before you adjourn, your May meeting is scheduled for your training session. If you don't have anything else on that evening...
What week?
Planning Commission training, we're bringing it outside.
Yeah, I understand, I've got, I've got a conflict, one of those weeks in May, so...
May 12th?
My question was, would you want to start earlier than the normal 7:30 start time?
Or do you want to...
Is it going to be as a training workshop?
It's all it's going to be as a...
No items, okay.
Will it be here?
Yes.
And then how long will it be?
I haven't, we haven't really said it yet, but I mean, I imagine it's going to be a couple of hours.
Okay.
If we haven't got any items on the agenda, then fine, let's just set it at 7:30.
Set it at 7:30? Or you wanted it earlier?
I said we move it off.
Yeah, I'm fine.[1733.44]